Okay na siguro. Okay na. Mayong hapon sa tanan. The 44th Regular Session, 20th City Council, Cagayan de Oro City, is now called to order. Please stand for the invocation to be led by the Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya.
Let us put ourselves in the presence of God. Almighty Father, we are gathered before your name in a session assembled for the purpose of attending the affairs of public governance in the city of Cagayan de Oro. We pray and beseech you that all things well as we endeavor to comply with the mandates in your name and by your people. Guide us and direct our affairs as we proceed to serving our people through legislative milling. This we ask through Christ our Lord.
Let us remain standing for the singing of our national anthem to be followed by the singing of the Cagayan de Oro march.
Mga kababayan ang pampansang awit ng Pilipinas. Tayang magigil, kadas pa sila halan. Halam ng puso, sadi pitoy buhay. Luwang din irinang, buhatan ang mahiting. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisi din. Sanagat ang tutok sa siwaya, salami kaong pagalaw. Ayun na tamtula ka'win sa pagtayang nilamahal. Ang isakap, atawat uyagun, ay darating eh. Ang ituring na taro, ya kayna, ang haydi ba tibingin. Luwag na palaw ng wara, dihagsin ka. Uyag ang it sa pirito. Ang inigaya na pangkayong ame, ang malay ng taliw sayo. Have the long, the long, our love and city. Thy houses, streets, gates, and cities, thy people, the tents, and happy. Have the young, the old, our love and the love and city. Dear sin, he wishes, he love us forever to his to live. Rock and roll to the land of promise. Swing in a one of heart. Say, "His devotion, help us to serve him forever free." The loving, the young, the young, the heart. Love him, love him, not him, this. Act him, he knows, and has him on. There is wish for you, and not thy heart. Have you to follow the grace of love, have the love and city. Loving me, my loving, who I got him, apply to flowers. Have you to follow the grace of love, have the love and city. See forever, do not go away, do not leave.
Mr. Secretary, kindly do the roll call to determine if there is a call.
Honorable Joseline B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer for the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Amy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Presiding Officer, Honorable George S. Goking, Honorable Jose T.P.S. Abu Junior, Honorable Malvern I. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ivona Yasin B. Imanu, Honorable Maria Lourdes Esgaani, Honorable Jalen Mercedes Elbalaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark U. Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Joseph G. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members: Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Ligan na mga barangay president, and Honorable John Michael Elseno, City Escape Federation President, Director of Mr. Presiding Officer.
The call is certified so we can go ahead with this afternoon's session. To everybody, especially our friends at the back who are here this afternoon, those who are viewing our session via Zoom and onboard the social media platform, to our colleagues in the City Council, all of us a pleasant afternoon. Our Vice Mayor and supposed to be our Presiding Officer is out on official business specifically to attend the graduation of her son who is graduating as cum laude. Vice, while you're in Manila, the 20th City Council is extending its warm congratulations. So we'll go ahead. The Majority Floor Leader, the Honorable Edgar Cabanlas, is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer, members of the City Council, guests that we have here present now, members of the media people of Cagayan de Oro who are watching us on different social media platforms. Good afternoon. May I move, Mr. Presiding Officer, to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session on June 26, 2023, and consider defunding the roll as reading itself.
Any second? So move and seconded. Hereby approve.
Move to approve the minutes of the previous regular session on June 26, 2023.
Any second? More than seconded, it's hereby approved.
On the special report portion of this afternoon's session, we have two members of City Council who are intending to present special report to the City Council. First, Councilor Christian Atchas, who will be reporting about traffic in Puerto, and Councilor Malu Serinyagani, who will be giving us information about this bivalent vaccine that is available for the public. That would be the sequence of reporting now. So may I move that Councilor Atchas be recognized?
Councilor Atchas is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To our Presiding Officer, Councilor Romeo Calizo, sir, good afternoon. To our Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Ed Cabanlas. To the members of the City Council, to members of media, friends, and to the people of Cagayan de Oro, a pleasant, good afternoon. Today, I would like to report to the City Council about the improvements of traffic and the construction of Puerto Bridge along Butuan City, Cagayan de Oro City, Iligan City Road. At this present, flow of traffic is now okay and it is already passable without delay and construction of Puerto Bridge is now on progress. The construction of this bridge created controversies when we experienced traffic shock during the first day of the implementation of the project. At this moment, Department of Public Works and Highways, especially Second District Engineering Office, were hammered by the complaints of the public as well. It reaches the attention of the City Council. DPWH were accused that the said project has no proper coordination. Let me share to you the chronology of events of the said project. On April 3, 2023, notice of award regarding the project is already given. By April 18, 2023, coordination meeting with the concerned agendas such as PLDT CDO, PLDT FiberCom, Mamsar Construction, CEO Ubu Si Palco, PFCon, Barangay Puerto, DPWH, CDO Second District, Oleson Corporation, and our RTA. On April 20, 2023, submitted traffic scheme and methodology to RTA. By April 24, 2023, there is a notice to proceed regarding the project. By May 18, 2023, executive order was released from the office of the City Mayor and by June 15, 2023, there is a road closure within meter width. June 15, 2023, there is an embankment of the first lane. By June 16, 2023, there is a normal traffic. By June 17, 2023, BPOC of Barangay Puerto meeting with vendors and RTA, DPWH contractor, Tanod and barangay officials conducted a meeting. By June 19, 2023, traffic was managed by the RTA and DPWH. The issue here, Mr. Chair, is not about the coordination of DPWH regarding the said project. The issue is how we approach the said issue. In my opinion and interpretation, DPWH was trialed by Public City. They made to appear that they are incompetent in handling projects in our city. Remember, Mr. Chair, that engineers from DPWH are career professionals. They should be treated professionally. I would recognize the effort of Punong barangay of barangay Agusan, Captain Ibuud Melissa. He made an initiative to solve the traffic in the said area and other concerns. Because of this initiative by the Punong barangay, Ibuud Melissa, traffic conditions is well improved. Ma'ukini unta ang angay na'tu buhaton, Mr. Chair. Na ang problema unta, na pwidira dili na'tu dalon din ani sa kunsyo, ug kinik pwidina'tu isgutan dit ato sa silong ug mas dali ang maong pagpasis na ini. Mr. Chair, this bridge construction at barangay Puerto is my requested project during my encompanie as the Punong barangay of barangay Puerto, part of my riverbank protection at Mendolug Creek located at Proxinku Puerto, the city. Dugay naninamo nagipangayo, dugay naninamo gihulatan sa katauhan sa barangay Bugo, Puerto og Agusan. Sa rason tungod kay gamay na kayo ang kanals sa atong Mendolug Creek. Muning rason nga kakalunupan ang tulukab barangay kay gaoverflow na ang tubig. Mr. Chair, this bridge construction is a pet project of Congressman Rufus Rodriguez with the estimated amount of 94 million. What I am worried about? I am not a member of the CDP. Where our beloved Congressman belongs, there are some of its members growling about the said project. Ngonta, kaming lumulupyo sa Puerto Agusan Bugo. We are patiently. Taas ang abong pasensya niining temporary inconvenience sa atong publiko. Unta muhangyo ko sa atong Congressman, sa atong DPWH. Ngonta, ilalang paspasan. Ilang humanon ang parekto kay kinanglanon keni sa tulukab barangay. Ma'ukining hinungdan, Mr. Chair, nga akumutindog, arununta, mahatagan keni ug hustisya. Kung imong tanawon, huntod karoon. Ang DPWH, especially the Second Engineering Office, guysgutan pa sa kahanginan. Ngonta, sila angay na'tu pasalamatan tungod kay makahatag man sila ug mga programs such as infrastructure project sa atong dakbayan. I only pray, Mr. Chair, that every person must in the exercise of his rights and in the performance of his duties, act with justice, give everyone his due, and observe honesty and good faith. That would be all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor Atchas. Before, I'll ask the body of any reaction. May I ask the good reporter, in aid of legislation, what do you propose?
Mr. Chair, it has been observed since na'y mga construction nga kakahitabu sa atong barangay. We are discussing about coordination. Remember that DPWH has the higher authority especially in plenty in the national projects. Ang kakahitabu manggood, Mr. Chair. It should be pleasant nga kung naay friendship among between interdepartments. Kay kakakita na'ko, kakaoobserbahan na'ko din ani, especially during deliberation in the committee. Kakahammer down ang atong mga engineers. At this point, nakita na'ko nga kinanglan, hatagan sa natu sila ug moral. Para usab nga, naatay harmonious relationship between other departments. Kaya kung nakita sa ilah na kumuani sila sa City Council, they have the impression nga sila maknakon, sila batikuson. As well, they are publics, Mr. Chair, na atong madunggan sa kahanginan nga sila kakahimo na hinuon ug kakapahiran na hinuon sa dautan nga emay. But in fact, they are providing us projects in the city of Cagayan de Oro.
So do you want to refer this to the appropriate committee for any needed action in aid of legislation?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, we are we are now open for any reaction to the report?
Thank you.
Councilor Bernie is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayong hapon sa tanan sa mga nananaw social media sa atong mga kaubanin, mga konsiyal na nadinikaroon. Mayong hapon, Mr. Chair. Last thing, Mr. Chair, I raise my hand. Karong hapon na because ang concern ni the good Councilor, Kuya Ian Atchas, actually, gitakol namo last week, Mr. Chair. Sa committee basa Public Works with the Councilor John Michael Seno. First, on that point na atong, on the first day nga nag-traffic, Mr. Chair, initially, sa among investigation with the DPWH and RTA, kay natapok maginato sila diri because of our special report po sa mga niaging session. Ni gawas gyod na, Mr. Chair, na niamin mampo't ang DPWH nga na sila'y kasaypanan ato kay ang dapat gydi ay sa muning committee hearing, Mr. Chair, para po magabalusi Ian Atchas. Dapat di ay gyod mag-submit sila ug traffic scheme sa RTA. Ang naimolang problema was ang traffic scheme nga gisen sa DPWH or the contractor. Si RTA medyo wala sila buoyon kay ilang gusto is sa first day labin na sa heavy nga kanal labin na sa pick hours, they want the stock and goongas scheme. Pero sila mismo na shock kay bisag wala pa sila nagapprove sa maong traffic scheme ng buhaton, nag-implementer itso, Mr. Chair. So in fairness man on that on that ano, particular nga ano, medyo kuansad sila, medyo ni-giamin nila nga nganong wala nila gi-coordinate kay tinoon manggyod nga wala'y coordination ang naitabo on that day. So that's why nakurat na lang po dayon ang RTA nga. Uy, nag-implement mo dritso rin kami. Wala pa mi nakainungon ko unsa'y dapat. Kay dapat, dapat galing, Mr. Chair, I don't know kung dapat ma-storya po ni sa committee on transportation ba ni traffic, but supposed to be di ay gyod po before i-implement paggyod ang traffic scheme, na apagiday dapat ka ng kuwan dry run, which is nga po naitabo ang maong dry run. So medyo aminado nga po na ang DPWH ug kuwanana. Yet, I strongly support on the on the comment of Councilor Ian Atchas na tama. We are not we are not ka ng against on the projects kay para manis sa kayuhan. We don't dilim sa taantay DPWH nga ditaganan ug daghan kayo'y construction. But what we want is really the coordination nga tana lampo'ng tamang gingon ni ni Councilor Ian Atchas nga usa ramantataas one government kung nag-coordinate ng tana. Kung actually comment galing ni Councilor Roger Abadai, pwidira man duol lamta na sila kubisin na pwidira ta na sila mag-kapi-kapi, mag-storya about it kunsa'y mayo and that's better because of the end of the day, di ilah si DPWH ang gidokdok, pati ang mga RTA, pati po mga kita City Councilors, Mr. Chair. Morana, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Bernie Espasia. Any other reaction to the special report? Yeah, yes, Councilor Ian Nakaya.
This is the first time that I would agree to the remarks of Councilor Atchas, Mr. Presiding Officer. And it goes without saying that I might and may have not been agreeable to his discussions in the previous. But the point taken that I am 100% amenable, Mr. Presiding Officer, is the point that he raised that when our career officials from DPWH are hammered down. I don't know the real meaning of hammer down, but to me, that's a different connotation that would belittle the career official's integrity and dignity as official of our government. And an impression that has been expounded by a City Council member that may be perhaps a point of discussion that we should all be apprised and at the same time be concerned about. Because while we would like to think that we push our agenda to the limit that we would like actions from certain agency to produce results according to our desired output such as the free-flowing traffic in the highway of Puerto going to Taguluan. At the same time, the swift implementation of infrastructure projects that has been the priority of the DPWH or the agency concern. To my mind, Mr. Presiding Officer, we really need the DPWH because they are the implementer of the national government. In fact, I have browsed over national laws on the national scope of governance. The DPWH is the planner of the national government in terms of infrastructure. In other words, if we are left behind by this agency and skip on the basis, on the ground, that we are also not desirable to their liking as an LGU to be prioritized with, that's another story. The people would suffer now and in the future. That is why I like how Councilor Atchas has put bluntly and straightforward to the face of the members of the council that we should lift each other's dignity and credibility. We collaborate, but we don't step on other shoes. So maybe perhaps some rationalization of how we deal and treat other officials, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya. So clear, he is now collaborating with the ideas presented by the good reporter. Yeah. On one aspect alone, that is preserving the dignity of the people from the DPWH. Yes, the chairman of Committee on Infrastructure, Councilor John Michael Seno.
Good afternoon to you, Mr. Presiding Officer, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo and of course to the members of the 28th City Council, friends of the media and fellow Cagayanans. I commend the report of the good Councilor from Second District, Councilor Ian Atchas, considering that he was a previous barangay captain of the said barangay. And on that note that I commended, in fact, in the previous interviews with the radio station, I stated that let's not point fingers here. No, kay samot man madugay ang pagsulbat na'tu sa problema. And I'm very happy now that the RTA and the DPWH are really working and in hand and with the results right now that we have faced. Medyo naanay kaarangan, Mr. Presiding Officer. I just really hope and pray that the collaborations between the DPWH and the RTA would stick no in some other projects also, particularly in the streets na kung wala pagali project, naanay traffic congestion daan. No? And now, they are continuously coordinating now with each other. Mayong napod ang dagan sa koordinasyon. It's just that siguro akumbalikon sa pagsulti. Let's not let's not just point fingers, kinsa ang sayo, kinsa ang insakto. Kaya at the end of the day, we are one government, DPWH, the local government unit, usaraman atong giservisyoan ang katauhan lang. Muna nga nag-sulti po ko nga, medyo taasan lang na'tong pasyanja, labin na sa kong ugali, na ay inana nga problema nga atong maagian, no? Uh, kay, di man po nagustuhon sa taga DPWH, sa contractor, even sa RTA, nga naay traffic congestion diya sa area. Just so happen nga, pick hour, and then naay project, wala na anticipate na ng kabugaton. But at the end of the day, during the committee meeting, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, may man ang dagan, uh, karoon, guapo na gyod kayo ang ilahang koordination sa DPWH of RTA, and, uh, pagasundo na na daw nila sa sunod pa ng mga projects, dini sa dakbayan. Baliko na po si katulong ay gayon, let's not point fingers with each other, let's help, because at the end of the day, we are one government. But of course, we should, we, we should uphold on the oversight function of the city, which is kung lai makita nato nga naay line nga pwede nila improve then, let's say it to them, no? Para po nga sila, masahiran po nila, unsa'ang, kay kulangun kay, ako nagtuko, Mr. Presiding Officer, that there's no such thing in this world as a monopoly of knowledge, nga ang DPWH sa po nga mui nasayod, unsa'ong nila pagsulbad sa pagpadagan sa trapiko, ang RTA rapod mui nasayod, mas maayog gyod ang collaborations sa nagda-iyang na departamento sa guberno, because at the end of the day, baliko na po, we are working as one to the people of Cagayan de Oro. Hopefully, wala na ay mag, mag, uh, point fingers pa kung kinsa ang naay diferensya, Mr. Presiding Officer. That's my, that's my, uh, prayer also, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you so much, and good afternoon to everybody.
Thank you very much, Counselor John Michael Seno. Anyway, uh, the prayer of the good reporter is to have this referred to the appropriate committee for further discussion. Uh, anyway, if there are no gaps, wala nte, mga criticisms, no? Uh, criticisms, uh, comes up, uh, come up because of gaps. So the gaps will just be filled up via the appropriate committee. So thank you very much, Counselor Ayat Atchas. So we'll go to the next reporter.
Counselor Gani?
Counselor Doctor Maria Lourdes. Gaany, how beautiful, Gaany is, uh, recognized.
May hapon ka na'tong tanan, my special report is for inform- for the information of everybody. Last June 29, 2023, the City Health Office launched the city's bivalent booster vaccination campaign against COVID-19. This was held at the Carmen Health Center at Macanhan and was led by our beloved Mayor Clarex Uy. I am hopeful that this will be a significant milestone in our fight against the pandemic. The initial 3,000 doses of bivalent boosters we received from the Department of Health are part of a large donation from the Lithuanian government. We are grateful for this contribution, which will enable us to protect our community from the virus. The initial targets of this vaccination campaign are the A1 and A2 priority groups. These are our frontliners, senior citizens, and people with underlying medical conditions, and who have received their second booster doses at least four months ago. Bivalent boosters were first introduced in the United States last year. They have since undergone a reformulation to effectively target both the original strain of the coronavirus and the highly contagious Omicron variant, which emerged in November of 2021. It has been shown to be effective in clinical trials. In one study, it proved to be 70% effective at preventing symptomatic COVID-19 infection. It was also 90% effective at preventing severe illness. This vaccine is not a magic pill, but it can help to protect against severe illness, hospitalization, and death from COVID-19. It is still important to observe basic health protocols, like wearing a face mask, social distancing, and frequent hand washing in order to stay safe. I take this opportunity to salute our city vaccination team for its gallant efforts to protect our city. Per CHO records, as of May 31, 80% of our senior citizens have received the primary vaccine, while the first booster coverage for residents aged 12 years and older stands at 45%. But despite the government's two and a half years of best efforts and billions of pesos reallocated to COVID-19 mitigation measures, there is still residual but significant vaccination resistance. This has had a dragging effect on our Vax campaign and has blunted its efficient implementation all over the country. I know that some people are still hesitant to get vaccinated. They may have concerns about the safety of the vaccine or about the side effects. However, both the science and experience have proven that the bivalent vaccine is safe and effective. I therefore appeal to Cagayanans, especially our frontline health workers and our senior citizens, both as your representative and as a health professional, to get your bivalent vaccine booster shots, and remember, by protecting yourself, you also protect your family in particular and the community in general. As we work towards the lifting of the country's state of public health emergency, let us remain vigilant, continue to follow safety protocols, and encourage everyone to get vaccinated. Together, we can overcome this challenge and protect the health and well-being of our beloved community. Thank you, and may we rise stronger from this crisis. Salamat, um, may hapon.
Any question to this special report? Uh, yes, uh, Counselor Tony James, Judith.
Sa atong halandong, Presiding Officer, Consejal General Romeo Caliso, ang atong majority floor leader, Consejal Edgar Cabanla, sa atong tinahod nga mga kauban sa konsero, atong mga bisita, member sa prensa, o ang atong katauhan sa dakbayan sa Cagayan de Oro, maupay. Ako lapangutana, kay ganina, nagka, na, isgutan man ni namo ni Consejal Gaany sa flag racing, ah, nag-sulti siyang, kinalan atong ipromote, bali ang maong pagpa-bakuna sa atong mga seniors. Pero sa akong nasahiran po, kay Consejal Gaany, gusto na naku clarification, kung atong siya ipromote, unya, pilakabok senior citizens dinis atong dakbayan, sa atong pagkadungog o nasahiran, 3,200 doses, raso unsa'ong maninato, Mr. Presiding Officer, o naagik kang Consejal Gaany. Kung atong ipromote, unya, kulangun lang manay gehapon, ang moramakani ang gehatag sa atong allotment, sa national government, sa atong pagbakuna, sa naatay ka ning bahin, sa akin na kinatibukan nga sa pagbakuna, sa atong mga, sa atong katawan dinis sa dakbayan, kung 3,200 ramang gehapon, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Unsa'man yang tubag sa'yo mo ganina?
Kulang, aw, wala po nakadungog magod, Consejal Gaany, nabisi, nabisi na magod si Consejal Gaany.
Binawag, history alam mo?
Na history ano, pero wala din nga na tubag, nabisi na mi, ganina.
Okay, okay, sige.
Namutana, good, to Counselor James?
Yes, nakadungod po sa'yo mong ganina.
Sige, okay. Atong patubag si Counselor Doctora Gaany.
Ako naikoreksikal, ay, na, na, ako naikoreksikal, Counselor James, no, it's 2,3,600, four initial doses. And rest assured na, atosan na siyang idispense ang 3,6 na doses, and hatag ang atong DOH, kay kumuhatag taong 10,000 doses, and considering nga, naay, naay specific temperature nga atong i-maintain, so dilin na siya na'to pwede, it will take pilakadays ang atong storage. So after the 3,6, rest assured nga, naay DOH nga matag sa ato, anong, succeeding, galo, naay batches, anak. Okay, Counselor James, are you senior na?
Okay, so, laro na to, uh, motor, initial lang ko, no, ipahurut lang sa, o mahurut, hatag na po DOH, kaya oban mangod na, ang mga senior ba naay mga gahegulo, di gyod kay. But anyway, ako lang nga, namanggoi simultaneous texting din he, I just ask the good reporter, uh, namutana sila derye, uh, if, uh, he has not get, uh, received his second dose, can one jump to the third, to the third, what do you call this, booster?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, for the information, no, uh, atong available is only the bivalent vaccine.
Okay.
Bivalent, considering, uh, duaka virus, ay, ang may go, the original one, which is katong HHH something, and this one is the Omicron virus. So sa karoon, uh, atong priority based sa guidelines sa DOH, is only those seniors or the A1 category, which are the frontliners, um, who have their second booster, especially four months ago na ang naay interval, so katong wala na ka, kuha, steady lang, okay? Magulat lang ta sa guidelines sa DOH, kay sa karoon, we follow the guidelines from DOH. Usarang ngangyo, kung namang galing mga vaccine, nga gayi hatag sa DOH, please avail gyod kung unsa'para, like, what happened, wala'y second booster, ang second booster was already pilan na kamans, and considering na naatay mga, um, healthcare workers, naaasa atong mga malls, para lang magulat, tapos wala, gyod, nagpakabaha, karoon kay naay third booster na. Ah, ako is, let's grab this opportunity, kay, two, uh, two types of specific strains sa virus ang may go ani, it's the original one, which is the H something, and the Omicron na karoon, so, delta marapang first, then this is the second Omicron. So I think, Mr. Presiding Chair, let's wait for the, um, guidelines sa DOH, katong, wala na ka.
Salamat tong ilang pangutana, good, uh, for those that not, uh, have not yet received the second booster, can they go direct to the third booster?
No, 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 Counselor.
So no, uh, for those who are monitoring online or via social media platform, the answer is no. Okay, so, uh, any more questions, there being none, let's proceed to the, to the, uh, agenda for the day.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, let's proceed to the business of the day. Proposed resolution, item number one, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 425, returning to the barangay council of barangay Lumbya, the city its ordinance number two, series of 2023, covering its supplemental budget number one for CY 2023, with an estimated income of 4,403,111 pesos and 97 cents, with information that its ordinance operative in its entirety, in its entirety, may request that Counselor Alam Lim be recognized.
Counselor Alam Lim is recognized.
Presiding Officer, may hapon sa tanan, everything is in order, I move to approve resolution number 2023 dash 425.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, approve.
Move to approve, second, second and final reading.
Any second? Seconded, approve.
Item number two, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 426, returning to barangay council of barangay, consolation, the city its ordinance number one, series of 2023, covering the, its annual budget for CY 2023, with an estimated income of 11,417,070 pesos, with information that its ordinance is operative in its entirety, may request that Counselor Abaday be recognized.
Counselor Abaday is recognized.
I move that the central solution be, uh, approved.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, central solution is approved.
Move to approve, second and final reading.
Any second? Approve.
Item number three, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 427, returning to the sangguni yang kabataan of barangay number six, the city's resolution number 2023 dash 003, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for CY 2023, with an estimated income of 270,527 pesos, with information that its resolution is operative in its entirety, may request that Counselor Seno be recognized.
Counselor Seno is recognized.
I shall move for its approval, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any second? Objection? There being none, it is approved.
Move to approve, second and final reading.
Any second? Seconded, approve.
Uh, item number four, talk.
Item number four is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 428, accrediting the herein enumerated civil society organizations, CSOs, for purposes of their membership in the Committee on People's Organization of the City Development Council, CDC, pursuant to ordinance number 1434 dash 2022, tweet, number one, Mother Ignatia National Social Apostolate Center, Incorporated, MINSAC, two, Aluba Homeowners Association, Incorporated, three, Philippine Island Kids International Foundation, Incorporated, four, Federation of barangay Women Development Committee, Cagayan de Oro, Incorporated, Committee Sponsors, Committee on Planning, Research, and Innovation, and People's Organization Accreditation, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
May I request that Counselor Ayan Mark Nakaya be recognized?
Counselor Ayan Mark Nakaya is recognized.
I move for its approval, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any second? Objection? None, approve.
Move to approve, second and final reading.
Second? Seconded, approve.
Item, item number five, talk, please.
Item number five is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 249, accepting the offer of the Liberty Land Corporation, represented by its consultant, Rosabel B. Villanueva, to turn over to the city government of Cagayan de Oro, the roads and common areas of the West Gate Highlands Phase III subdivision project located at Upper Palalan barangay Lumbya, the city, in accordance with subdivision laws, rules, and regulations, and authorizing city mayor, the city mayor, to sign the corresponding deed of donation, therefore, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein, Committee Sponsors, Committee on Subdivision and Land State, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Mr. Chairman, may I request Counselor Josep P. Abou be recognized?
Counselor Joey Abus recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer, move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 249.
Any second? Objection? Uh, yes, uh, Counselor Abad is recognized.
Uh, I just want to be clarified, although I'm one of the signatory to, uh, endorse this to the plenary for discussion, now, the proposed ordinance, uh, when I do the, uh, keen reading, the donation of the roads and common areas of the Watergate Highland, Highland subdivisions, now noted that in page, page, uh, attachment, oh, page 41, please, uh, go bear your, uh, gadget or your hard copy, page 41, uh, no, no, page 45, annex F, annex F, and page 46, I have not found, I do not know if it is in the secretariat, there is a, uh, consent of the, a letter of consent on the part of the subdivision owner, because the subdivision owner is also, uh, be consented whenever there are, uh, conversions of the use of any portion of that, of the subdivision, like road, alley, sidewalks, and playgrounds. Now, if you read, if you go bear with the law, under
under 19957, PD 957, as amended by PD 1216, it states that in paragraph four, upon their completion of the certified, as certified by the authority, road, alleys, and sidewalks, playgrounds shall be donated by the owner or developer to the city or municipality. And it shall be mandatory for the local government, governments to accept, provided however that the parks, playgrounds may be donated to the homeowners association of the project with the consent of the city or municipality concerned. So no portion of the parks and playgrounds donated thereafter shall be converted to any other purpose or purposes. And under the, reiterated also under the, uh... What's that, uh... The same, uh, no, uh... Uh, H U L R B, uh, Rule Four, Affects of the donation of road lots and open space of the Human Settlement Eco-Ter Commission Administrative Order Number 82-01, Section Eight, Rights of Grand Peace to Donate Roads, Lots, and Open Space. Any person who shall be, who is liable to secure certificate of population from the commission shall have the right to donate the road lots and open space to the city or municipality concerned, provided, again, that the parks, playgrounds, and recreational use may be donated to the homeowners association of the subdivision with the consent of the city or municipality concerned. So my concern is, is there any attachment or consent or letter of consent of the subdivision owner of the said subdivision? Lamang dinin nakaattach, dinis page, uh, appendix eight and page 45 and page 46. Murana akong concern, uh, Mister Presiding Officer and my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Consular Roger Abada. I will let the committee chairman answer.
Mister Chairman, in our experience as chairman of this committee, I have yet to, uh, meet the homeowners association who will refuse the approval of this. Because you know, once we approve this, Librinas suka ang kuryente, on a slippery run. And the question here in the city, we don't easily approve this. Because lucky, once we approve this, it is now the responsibility of the city government to pay everything. But we cannot avoid the law, because the law is clear on this. That once the project is completed, we have to accept the city government. And what is the rationale here? Let us look into the rationale why, why we are, we are being instructed to accept subdivisions that are completed. Why? Because housing is a very important component of our society. It's not easy to put up housing for a project. In fact, the housing authority din, na... Keninga to kening disshod, it's only now that we have the disshod. When only the government now is trying to compensate what we lack before. Because the program of the government before was to leave the solution of the lack of housing to the private sector. And in order that the private sector will be inspired to, to construct more housing projects, this is mukini ang ilan regalo. So, I thought sa tanga, daw atan iki, nakapabor ang, ang, ang contractor, ang mga develop... No! Sobra kulang kita's balay, man na. Pero mula ginna. Kaya kung atong nagiging ko, nakita na'y magbayad. But yes, mukita'y magbayad, because siya na kinaconstruct sa 400 ka balay. 400 ka familia nakapuyu. But it answer to the question of Consular Abada. Check your page 60, in Adha. Yes, you should also consult your papers. Page 60. Size 60. And now, uh, the board of through a resolution has put it in favor biton over. Oh, it's very clear.
That's right. Yeah. That's why Mister Chairman, I must keep. Okay. Bear by whether there is, uh, attachment.
So the attachment that you're looking for is already page 60?
Because I put it in the attach, and two pages, there was no mention by the...
So, the... What confused you is the packaging, no?
Yeah, yeah.
Because the attachment that you're looking for is in another page.
60 plus.
Oh, nah, page 60. Okay, so will that satisfy?
That's not objection, but only clarificatory.
Okay, so it was just clarification, uh...
Pro une, kudasapun, bitungue diyan, nek, cactus ya.
Sige.
Megan, na.
Any more question? There's pending motion? Yes, uh, Consular Iron Nakaya.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. Uh, correctly articulated and put by Consular Ed Cabanlas as regards the policy of the previous city councils, that we don't easily and readily accept deed of donations. And that is on the basis of the financial capacity of the city government, accepting the burden after the construction. But if you fresh all out development versus additional expenditure of the city government, of course, the development has more weight. But let us all be careful, because there are commitments also prior to development, Mister Presiding Officer. And the commitments have to be first taken care of by the developer. And who could tell us honestly as to the commitments that have been complied with by the developer? It's only the homeowners, Mister Presiding Officer. That is why when Consular Roger Abada asked, I checked and browsed over the attachments and I found page 60. But then again, the page 60 would say that they are asking for for three months leverage. Since they are, they're, they're... Accordingly, there would be a new officers who would take over and check the veracity of all the infra projects implemented by the developer, Mister Presiding Officer. And then when I checked the date of the letter, it was only May 1. In other words, if we count May 1 to three months, it's still two months, Mister Presiding Officer. So either we give in to the request of the, the party's concern led by the HOA Chair and the President, Ms. Mary Ann Fernandez, or we forego and approve. But to my mind, there is a request. And it is, uh... It, it has already prompted us, Mister Presiding Officer.
So, what's the pleasure of the good Consular as regards this, yeah?
I move that we defer and give time to the HOA officers and members, the three months that they are asking, Mister Presiding Officer, and take cognizance of this proposal when the time comes.
So, uh...
Move for the deferment.
So, there's the motion to defer the said, uh...
Second.
And it's seconded by the committee chairman himself. So, uh, any objection to the deferment? There being none, item number five will be deferred, uh, for, maybe, how long will, are we going to defer this? So, until August, three months deferment? We'll wait until the HOA will provide us with the feedback as regards this?
Although the laptop is conditional, Mister Presiding Officer, the favorable endorsement is conditional. May we also ask the committee concerned that to get and collect the, the position, whether or not the same position has been made by the new officers or the association concerned in the, in this, uh, in this subdivision. Uh, so that after the one month, which is lacking, to add up to the two months already persist, maybe we can be apprised of what has been happening accordingly to the desire of the members of this subdivision.
Okay, so for that particular, uh, motion, after it has been approved, it's already been seconded, no? Uh, and there's no objection, we invite those concerned with questions, you know, have questions on this particular proposed ordinance. Yes, uh, Consular Abada.
May I request, Mister Che, if, uh, the committee chairman will not be too much for him, that the committee will conduct an ocular inspection on this area to be donated. Because this was donated 2019 pa, and when it was inspected by engineering and another, another department, there were deficiencies, drainages, roadway, roadway near, and other deficiencies, and it was recommended to be rectified. Good that in 2023, I think, May, May 2021, there were team who inspected it and accordingly in the record that it was to be rectified. But the committee must have also be, uh, clearly be familiar with this so that when we approve this, any time, uh, sabit.
Anyway, uh, I think the deferment for one month is good enough. Okay, deferred for one month to redo what are required for before we enter into the deed of donation. So, no objection? Okay, item for the deferment. Okay, so item number five, the proposed ordinance number 2023-249 is hereby deferred.
There being no other matters to take, motion to adjourn.
Any objection? Session adjourned.